We've got some changes on it that we have to add.
Yeah, we need to add the reappointment of our Veteran's Service Officer. Is that for your term, right?
Yes.
Okay. With that addition, all in favor?
I think we only had a motion, so did you second it?
Yes, I did second it.
Okay.
With the additions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we'll go right into the first item. We'll do the appointment of, uh, we need to do an appointment of our service, Veteran's Service Officer.
Move reappointment.
Move a reappointment for four years? You're not ready yet, Kurt.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor of the reappointment of Kurt for another four years?
Aye.
Any objections?
Let the record show the entire audience.
Not a good sign so far. Okay, now we go ahead.
All right, now that we're legit, raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Curtis Cannon.
I, Curtis Cannon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
For and on behalf of.
For and on behalf of.
The citizens of Clay County.
The citizens of Clay County.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of County Veteran's Service Officer.
Of the Office of County Veteran's Service Officer.
In the county of Clay.
In the county of Clay.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So hold me up.
So hold me up.
Congratulations, Curtis.
Thank you very much. Stayed on for another four years.
Oh, yeah. We'd miss it.
Now we'll go into citizens can be heard. Now you can speak up. All right. Let's see, are there any other citizens on? No, I guess everybody's a worker here, okay. Approval of the minutes from January the 14th.
Move approval.
Second. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Payment of bills.
Some of them.
Jim?
Second.
And second by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. And with that, we're going to go into the funding for the drug court for, Drug and Veterans Court with Judge Lawson and Tom Kautzman.
And Janelle, you're here.
And she looks like Janelle's coming along.
Oh, you got a chair. I was going to pull it over for you. You want to sit faster, you don't stand.
She brought her own chair.
Do you want me to come?
You're part of our team, too.
I'll sit over here.
We're late. All right, well, good morning. Don is handing out the stats for both our drug court and our veterans' court, which are our Clay Becker Treatment Courts. And again, we just want to thank you for your support over the years. It's because of your support that we have been able to do the great work that we have in our treatment court. And we have had some amazing success stories in the context of that work. Honestly, I am privileged and blessed to be able to do that work because it is honestly the best part of my job. It's both the most frustrating and the most rewarding, but with one generally comes the other. As a matter of fact, we're talking amongst the judges about starting some type of wellness court that incorporates other types of treatment courts. You may be hearing about that sometime in the future. It's just in the really, really infant stages at this point. We're kind of brainstorming right now. But the funny thing is, and this is what leads me to my statement about me being privileged and blessed, every single one of the judges in Clay County is just wanting to step up and wanting to do one of those courts and is saying, "Pick me, I want this work." And we are also very lucky here in that Don is not only the coordinator for our Clay Becker Treatment Court, that's a halftime job for him. His other halftime job is he is the treatment court coordinator for the entire Seventh Judicial District. And so he works with all of the other treatment courts everywhere else in the district. And I'm not speaking for him, but I believe this is the only county that every single judge has said, "Pick me, I want a treatment court," and is, you know, literally duking it out to get that honor and privilege. So we have an amazing team here in Clay County, not the least of which is our fearless leader, Don. And I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about our stats.
All right, yes, so I just want to start real quick with the biggest change that we made in the past year. So we had had a drug court and a veterans' treatment court that were two separate specialty courts. We have since combined them now into, we are now one treatment court. We are the Clay Becker Treatment Court with a drug court track and a veterans' treatment court track. The reason we did that was because the state has a funding formula for all treatment courts. Each treatment court gets funding from the state based on their participant numbers. And our numbers in this last year for our veterans' court were too low to continue to qualify for funding under the funding formula. So we were looking at potentially using all of that funding, which was $47,000 annually from the state. So what we did was we combined our two courts into one because then we can count our total numbers in both in one treatment court, which allowed us to keep some of that funding. So instead of a $47,000 cut, we lost $20,000, which it's still a cut, but it's not as bad as what it would have been. So we've been going forward now as one treatment court with two tracks. And I've provided you the statistics. You can see both the drug court and veterans' court in the past year. We're currently at 27 participants for drug court, and our capacity is 30, so we're close to capacity right now, which is good. We have, you can see the breakdown by phases. We currently have, of those 27 people, 13 of them are in the final phase, so we expect to have quite a few graduations here in the coming months. We're now up to 90 graduates total in the program. You can see from the numbers that all of them have had their driver's license, they were all current on child support payments at graduation, they all have been sober for a year, a minimum of a year, at the time they graduated. We've had 20 people who are, 20 graduates who have reoffended. That's a recidivism rate of about 22.5%, which is, compared to people who aren't in treatment courts, that's, you know, much, much better. I know the stats for people who aren't in treatment courts, five years out of their conviction, it's like over 60% recidivism rate. And then I just had some demographic data, too, for the graduates. You can see how that breaks down by gender and race. Veterans' Court, we only have two participants right now currently, but we had four graduations in the past year, and we're screening a couple people now currently, too. We've had six total graduates in veterans' court, and so far, none of them have reoffended. So we have a 0% recidivism rate, which, want to stress that while I can, but we've seen success there. Then you can look at our budget numbers. The funding is pretty much the same as it has been in previous years, except for the cut that we got from the state. And then we also had a grant that ended in the past year. But I just want to say the probation, the DOC has really stepped up. We've been working with them, you know, to address how we're going to go forward with the funding cuts, and they have agreed to help cover the costs of our probation agent. And with the help that they're giving, we should be able to continue to go forward fully funded. So I just want to commend Janelle for her commitment to treatment court also. And with that, I just want to thank all of you for your constant support and consistent support of our treatment courts. We couldn't do this without all of you, and we appreciate it very much. So with that, I guess if you have any questions, if you'd answer.
I don't have a question, but just a comment mainly for the public. So I had attended one of the graduations, which if you haven't been, is incredibly emotional. It's pretty phenomenal progress to, I witnessed from the start to the finish. And so I was dropping my son off at preschool and noticed they were putting the new shingles on the roof of the building and looked up, and the person who was running the crew is one of our graduates. And so that, to see that we really gave him a second chance at life, and here he is molding the crew and making sure they're doing the best, I think is testimony to why this is important, because these are people that have made mistakes but are giving back to our community, they're active and working in our community. And so I just think that this is a great thing and hope that we can just continue it as long as we can.
And that particular individual actually owns the business that was subcontracting.
Yep.
So he was more than running the crew.
Yeah.
He is self-employed and he actually created that business while he was in drug court.
Yeah, so pretty neat.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Yep.
Now, Don, you said you're thanking us for supporting the program, though we thank you for doing the program. That is really, I mean, I'm glad to see you're here because we're showing the people here in Clay County, I mean, what is going, Clay and Becker County, what is going on in the courts here, you know? We're not just here spending money and all that, putting money into the program. I mean, there's some benefits to doing what you're doing, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thanks.
You get a lot of bang for your buck.
Yeah, you do.
And it's one of the best deals.
I mean, sometimes we wonder about, you know, the prisoners and what have you and stuff. I mean, here's a result of what's happening, you know? We are trying to rehabilitate people and stuff and doing a good job, and you're doing a good job at it.
And we do have a graduation tomorrow. Just put that little plug in. Tomorrow at, the drug court starts at 1:15. By the time we get to the graduation, it'll probably be 1:30 or so. So you're out and about. I know we'll see you there, Frank. And I know you always have that conflict, so that stinks. But anytime you're out and about, stop that. I know before, I know Janelle has an update as well, and before she gives that, I just really want to throw some kudos to Janelle. I mean, we lost some money in a time when our costs are going up, because the cost of everything goes up every year. And Janelle really stepped up and got the state on board to get some state money on the DOC side and made some changes in the own, her own structure within her office to meet that budget shortfall. And so thank you for that. I mean, you are a rock star. That was amazing.
Thank you. I don't think I can take any credit. I think it's about communication, talking with each other, what resources are available, and that's part of why I am here today, is to ask the board to support moving some of our supervision fees to the drug court budget for this position, and that would be $20,000. You should have this in your packets. I'm not sure if you received it.
Yeah, it'll be coming up, yeah.
Okay. So that is?
Is that this item or is that a different item?
I think it's this.
They're together.
Yeah. And so I am requesting that $20,000 of the collected county supervision fees be moved over to the drug court budget. And then I did approach the Department of Corrections, and they will, every year, put forth $17,000. And then we did discuss some of the supplies, the drug court, testing supplies could come now through the Department of Corrections, will be additional cost savings and some of that, but...
Excuse me, that is part of this thing.
Yeah.
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 That is the first item.
Yeah. And so that should itemize out how we came to securing, I believe, the position to June of 2021. And this position is very valuable to the probation department and definitely oversees a caseload that would otherwise go to other staff that is not able at this time to absorb that easily. We do recognize specialty courts and their success in working with individuals at such an intense supportive manner, and so we do hope to continue it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Janelle, I have a question.
Yeah.
On the back, you have the, what the balance is of the account and what it would be if we were to transfer the $20,000.
Yeah.
Is, what else is coming out of that? Is that balance pretty, stay pretty level, or is there active things coming out of it?
It is not consistent. That is supervision fees that are collected from clients that are on supervision. It's $200 per gross misdemeanor case and $100 for misdemeanor cases. The other thing that consistently comes out of that budget is the juvenile offender restitution program funds. But typically, we put forth $6,000 to $9,000 a year towards that. So we do have enough funds to maintain the JORC program.
So if we were to do the $20,000 and then in a year, would there be $20,000 in there to go forward?
It's my understanding that we'll continue to seek grant funds and what we're eligible for, and so the anticipation is not to go back to that budget, that we would seek additional funds elsewhere. And I do continue to ask the Department of Corrections to fund agent positions within the communities. Unfortunately, this year, we weren't granted any additional positions, but that is on the radar and has been requested, and Clay County does have the population that we would be recognized for that if positions were allocated.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. I had moved that we transfer $20,000 from the probation department's supervision fee revenue to the drug court budget.
Second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Thank you.
Before we wrap up, can I ask one thing? You know, the county attorney's office is a really integral part of our drug court team as well. You have, I just didn't want to let you off completely, Mr. Melton.
Well, obviously, I mean, I've known Don Sheldon, you know, for a long time, and we know that this is an extremely important program and well-organized. I participated for a number of years. I now have a different attorney assigned to it, Mike Leeser. He's doing a great job with it, but we know, just I think what Michelle said, that we get a lot of bang for our buck. I mean, the amount of both monetary savings of not putting somebody in prison and what that's costing us or different probationary programs versus the supervised program that's getting them back to a stable environment, whether it's housing, whether it's job, schooling, I mean, all of those things are so important holistically. I mean, so it's a superb program, and it continues to bring us great value, I'd say, in Clay County. So obviously, we're very supportive of it.
Do we have an idea what it costs to house a prisoner every day, or what we're saving by keeping a prisoner out?
Well, those numbers are definitely out there. I don't have those here specifically, but it's definitely good savings. I don't know if Don can speak to that specifically, but...
I don't know it off the top of my head, but...
We'll find out and let you know at the graduation tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then you can pass it on.
Well, we know a little bit of what we were paying daily per diems when we were having prisoners out of county.
Yeah, it was just 55, yeah.
I mean, so that's, that's the bare bones, at least.
And that's jail. I mean, prison is...
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, prison is a whole different animal.
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much, because, and I'll be there tomorrow, and unfortunately, I'll get emotional again. I mean, it's just such a good experience there. For those that don't come to that, it's just, it's a good thing that you're doing there, and thank you for that.
Thank you. It'll be a good one tomorrow.
Okay.
Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, next thing is Kathy McCabe, who are probably telling, looking for some budgeted decisions, coming to entertain us. Oh, questus.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I have Jamie Hinden here as well. Some of these positions are hers. These are the 2020, you know, new requests that you approved through the budgeting process, so this information is just a little bit more about each of those positions. Minus the .6 LPN for detox, I did actually have it in the budget, I just failed to move it over to the 2020 new request, so I talked with the PIC committee, and they approved moving it forward with all of the new requests as well. So that's included, the .6 LPN for detox. And then the other positions, we have the .6 LPN, the .6 finance, and the .6 public health documentation technician administrative support. Those are all variable hours moving to, the request is moving to a .6 because of the workload. We just can't complete it with the amount of help we have, so we need to move that to a .6. We have a public health analyst as a .6. We plan to do that to save some of the request funding for 2020. We are moving that to, like, mid of this year, that we would, we would advertise and hire that position. And we have a .6 Healthy Family America Coordinator. The Healthy Family America is an evidence-based home visiting program, and we're required to have a coordinator in our department for that program. So that is that request. And then the .6 case manager is, we need a lead for all of the programs we have in those program areas. Jamie, maybe you can tell them the number of programs we have in the adult health area.
So in the adult health area, we supervise the programs that are contracted, health plans, DHS, to serve all of those over 65 and those at risk for hospitalization. So there are seven different programs, three different health plans, DHS, about 15 staff in that department.
So hence why the total cost of all those are, it is not so high, just because some of the, some of the costs were already in our budget, we're just moving them up to a .6. And then, of course, we have some revenue for, in our case management area and also in our home visiting program. So, so those are the, the number of new requests for 2020.
And these will be the last ones for this year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I guess we discussed this at PIC, you know, we decided that this would be a good way to go on that, so any questions on that, or?
Did, did we, so going from a .4 to a .6 then also brings them into benefits?
Correct, right.
Have, have we incorporated the benefit cost into your budget?
Yes, we have.
So these people are on variable hour now. Did they, are these already on benefits, or they weren't on?
No, variable hour is not...
So they will go on the new benefit program?
Correct. And that's been incorporated. We did include that in our 2020 budget.
So that's the, that it all includes in the $79,000?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
All right. Yep, sorry, yep, that is correct.
So unless it's sort of like adding one position?
Yeah, and they, and, and those benefits are based on the new, as of January 1st?
Yes. Yeah, the new benefit package.
Well, I know that Grant's not here, but I was on PIC last year, and I know that we had discussed this pretty much at length, and my hope is that we can get applicants for this. I know that's part of the, part of the challenge, but I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Give me a motion by Jenny, second by Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
How was that? We'll go to Rhonda with Amy. She sees Michelle and Quinn. Oh, Quinn, you're back again, yes.
The team's all here. Good morning.
These people again were part of our, were part of our PIC meeting on last Thursday that we had, that we went through with the, our proposal, so go ahead, Rhonda.
Yes, okay. Um, yes, we did bring this to PIC last week. We were fortunate to apply for a grant through the Department of Human Services. It's for federal funds, funds that we've actually been getting for almost two decades, actually. The amount of money we've been getting has been fairly small. It'll fluctuate anywhere between the $12,000 to $20,000. The funds that we get have been serving youth who are aging out or in foster care, and the, the money has mostly been going to purchase services in a summer youth program to try to give those kids some skills to independent living as they unfortunately age out of foster care or are struggling from youth to adulthood. This past year, we were able to apply for additional funds, which the state has been calling big ideas, and they were encouraging multi-county collaboration. So our staff worked with Becker County staff, and they submitted a proposal that was awarded. And the, the change in our services was to add a .5 social work position to work hand in hand with these youth to get them to independence as they age out of foster care or out of their parental home, if they've been in foster care in the past. The majority of the numbers would be coming from Clay County, but Becker County does have some youth that would be eligible as well. So again, the position was .5. And I'll be honest, we continue to struggle with our caseload numbers in our child protection area, particularly in our ongoing, and so we wanted to take this opportunity to see if the board would approve a full-time position with the cost of that, so grade 18, step one, with 2020 benefits would be about $84,000. So we would take $46,000 of the grant to pay for that, and then the remaining $38,000, we actually have been watching a contract that we have with the Village Family Service Center, and that contract, both last year and this year, has been trending quite low. And we have met with the village and talked over our proposal, so what we'd like to do is move up to $40,000 of those funds out of that contract and then use it for this position, and that we would do that going forward. And we feel like we would be able to do that without compromising the contract we have with the village, because we have a cap amount of about $258,000, and then they bill us fee for service for the in-home therapy that they provide. So their staffing level will remain the same, it's, it's just that they're not accessing that maximum grant. So that is how we would propose to pay for the position. This grant through DHS is for two years, for 2020 and 2021. We'll have an opportunity to reapply. I do know that there's always a concern, what do we lose that grant? And if that's the case, the services that we're providing would have to change, and we wouldn't be able to do that increased care coordination for those youth. But the other piece is, is we have constant turnover, it seems, in our child protection unit, so we think that we would be able to manage that if we lost the grant through attrition situations, so. So that is our request. I brought the team. I'm going to let them introduce themselves, because I don't know that we've had particularly Michelle and Quinn to the board much, so I wanted them to introduce themselves as well.
Quinn Jager, I supervise the assessment and investigations in the child protection.
Michelle Thorndorf, I supervise child welfare and children's mental health unit.
Amy Amundson, ongoing child protection, case management.
So in your packet, let's see what I provided, some, just some caseload details of, the staff that are listed in the packet are not Quinn's staff. Quinn's staff do the upfront investigative family assessment and traditional investigative work. And if there is a need for ongoing or court-related services, they get passed over to primarily Amy's unit, Michelle's unit as well. Michelle's more focused on mental health truancy. But as you can see, the longevity of our staff, we just continue to really struggle. Unfortunately, our staff that have been here any length of time are getting relied on a lot for new staff, along with our supervisors, of course. You can see their number of cases. The problem that we're seeing is the number of kids that are on their caseloads that are in out-of-home placement. We have folks, if you look at Emily in the middle there, who's been here two months, has 20... I brought the team, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, because I don't know that we've had particularly Michelle and Quinn to the board much. So I wanted them to introduce themselves as well.
Quinn Jager, I supervise the assessments and investigations in the child protection.
Michelle Thorndorf, I supervise child welfare and children's mental health unit.
Amy Amundson, ongoing child protection, case management.
So in your packet, let's see what I provided, some, just some caseload details of the staff that are listed in the packet are not Quinn's staff. Quinn's staff do the upfront investigative family assessment and traditional investigative work. And if there's a need for ongoing or court-related services, they get passed over to primarily Amy's unit, Michelle's unit as well, Michelle's more focused on mental health truancy. But as you can see, the longevity of our staff, we just continue to really struggle. Unfortunately, our staff that have been here any length of time are getting relied on a lot for new staff, along with our supervisors, of course. You can see their number of cases. The problem that we're seeing is the number of kids that are on their caseloads that are in out-of-home placement. We have folks, if you look at Emily in the middle there, who's been here two months, has 20 kiddos on her caseload in out-of-home care. It's just not doable. And we will not keep these staff with these kinds of numbers. So we're taking this opportunity to ask for that additional half-time position, but we are continuing to strategize on how we can get more resources within this unit to try to stabilize what's happening. The other page, let's see, oh, it's just the salary calculation for the position and then the notification from DHS on the grant.
When I look at your case distribution, why is there such a mixture of cases? I mean, some have five cases, some have 20 cases.
That's out-of-home placement cases, right?
Yeah, out-of-home placement.
Yeah, those, and I can let Amy and Michelle perhaps speak to that, but mostly it's the number of placement cases. But if you look at the number of cases, the differences between like 60 for Alex and 40 in relation to some of the others.
Those are attributed to, Alex is our, she does our permanency. So once a case where there's been a termination of parental rights or there's gonna be a transfer of permanent or physical legal custody, she helps the workers get all the paperwork prepared so we can move those cases to permanency faster. She also works with our licensing department and goes out and emergency-licensed relatives, which we're required to do by statute for the Department of Human Services. So she will go out and try to get these relatives licensed as soon as possible so the kids can be in foster care with their relatives, whether it's a grandparent, aunt, cousin, a significant relationship. And then Mary does our children's mental health, our CADDY and placement case management for kids who are placed due to their disabilities. So she has some kids that are in the home that are receiving community-based services. So that's why her caseload looks a little different. To be honest, it's sometimes difficult to assign cases because it kind of depends on how busy the worker is, if they're in crisis with some of their cases. Some, we've seen a huge amount of large sibling groups come in where we have six kids, six siblings who have to be placed, or five siblings. So one case, it's almost like it could take that one case manager to manage six kids. I mean, I think of my own self with two kids and making sure they're going to all their scheduled appointments and school and meetings. And then you have six kids just in one family, or six families that each have three, four, five, six kids that all need that constant supervision.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, thank you for that. I mean, just understanding how it all works out, you know, it's helpful, you know, that it's not just case-by-case thing, you know. They're all different, you know. I just thought the people that, a few years under the belt there, that really getting overloaded there, you know. And I'm sure some of those cases will, as the other people get more experience will.
Well, we just had a new staff start today, so we're hoping that we can maybe move some cases around. But we have another staff going out on maternity leave in about a month, so.
You shouldn't allow that.
We try to have those conversations, no, we don't, but.
I think that's a good point, because when we look at our staff, we've had five FMLAs within these staff. We have, you know, new moms having babies and other kinds of medical situations. And then the turnover leaves huge gaps of time before we can get somebody on board. So I don't, I feel like this, even though you have, what, 11 staff listed there, I don't know that we've, I feel that we've ever been at 11 staff capacity. And so staff are covering each other's caseloads. And quite honestly, now more than ever, I'm starting to hear concern, statements from our county attorney's office, the court, about the changeover in staff and families are saying, I've had three case managers, no one knows what they're doing. And our staff are working so hard, but that is so detrimental to the engagement that we're trying to have with these families, the turnover that we're seeing. So I think we just really have to, and unless we can get these caseloads down and manageable, the staff also cannot get their documentation done. We're seeing some situations where we're late on court reports, which the court does not appreciate, nor do the attorneys. And our staff are struggling, because then they go to court and they get scolded for not having things done in a timely way. And they're trying their best to get those things accomplished, but there's just so many hours in a day. This group cumulatively has over 160 hours of flex time that is difficult for them to even take in terms of even vacations, because when they come back, things are exploded. And it's not work that can sit there, somebody has to cover, so.
Michelle, you were gonna say something before, what, you were just?
I think Rhonda covered it well. No, I was gonna add in on Mary's case, just because, you know, she has been seeing a lot of, you know, we would like to take on some more children's mental health cases, but we're really not able to because she's covering the child protection cases. And things that we had had planned for our unit just really haven't been able to go because you have to deal with the workload and what you have to do. And so things have been adjusted and, but the workers are doing the best that they can.
Okay, thank you.
And for Quinn's unit, Quinn, there's a note down there, they have 83 open assessments. Well, as those cases move forward, some of those cases are gonna keep coming to these units. And they keep getting more in terms of assessments, so just the flow is, yes, yeah.
Couple of questions. I just wanna make sure I'm following the flow of funds here. So in your 2020 budget, you had budgeted for a part-time position paying 46,000?
No, none of this is in the 2020 budget.
Okay, so none of it's in the budget, so, but neither is the $70,000 grant.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Well.
I, I guess, I guess where it's, where the language in here throws me is because, you know, under this paragraph here where we talk about the Minnesota Department of Human Services accepted, you know, Clay County is being the fiscal host. And then the part that made me, it has me confused is of this, 46,000 per year was allocated for the part-time social work position.
Okay.
And to me, that.
Right.
That kind of confused me when, when it says was.
Yeah, yeah, that 46,000 is not in the 2020 budget, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, so just so we can clarify, I think that needs to be clarified that, but you, but you did have, you did have a part-time position that you want to move to full-time?
We do not have a part-time position right now. Rather than hiring a part-time position under this grant, we would ask it to be full-time with over half of it funded under this grant and the other part.
So, so did the grant emphasize a part-time position?
Yes.
So if we hire a full-time position, what does that do to the grant?
We just, we just account for half of their time under the grant and the other half would be the child protection.
And so, so then we would, we would be doing a shift from the contracted services from, from the village?
From the village, yes.
Okay.
And that, that, those funds were in the 2020 budget.
Right.
And so we just, we'll, that'll show an under expenditure and we'll take that money and use it to pay for the position.
So if we're getting 70 and we're applying 46,000 of that towards a full-time position, where's the difference between the 46 and the 70 going?
That money will be used to maintain the group that we have facilitated for several years. So during the summer, we contract with Lakeland Mental Health to provide an independent living skills group. So we're hoping to have that coordinator work to continue to run that group. So that group meets weekly. They have someone who come, they take them out into the community and look at apartments. How do you rent an apartment? How do you, they have someone from a bank come in, how do you get credit? How do you, so they meet with them, these kids weekly, building those skills. So some of that money will continue to pay for that, that group, which will be run here in Clay County. And then Becker County will bring some kids over to participate in the group as well. And then a portion of that money also goes to fund items or programs for those youth as well. So we access behind-the-wheel training to pay, pays for behind-the-wheel training. It helps them buy clothes for their jobs. It helps them pay for some graduation expenses if they have them. So a certain amount, we had to allocate it out, which we have done every year. We usually get about 12,500 where we do 6,500 for the grant. And then the remaining funds pay for these other activities for kids. Like if they're taking the ACT or if they're getting a GED or it kind of pays for those extra funds that are expensive for these kids that foster parents don't have to pay for them.
Ms. Chair, just to follow up, and I, that's, I think that's good. I think there's a lot of, I think that's money well-spent in terms of being educated. And it's part of the whole getting them back into society type of deal. And I, I think that's, you know, into a good, good way. But if I can maybe direct this to Steve. So if we're gonna approve this, I would like to see us actually make adjustments to budget line items to reflect, so that when we start doing the 21 budget in July, that we're incorporating the grant revenues and the expenses on the appropriate lines so we're comparing apples to apples in the future. Some of these things, if we don't do that, it can get confusing later, so.
Yeah, I think they're planning to reduce the Village Family Service budget.
Right, I would do a contract addenda with the village. So I would addend their contract and then we could certainly work with Lori to reduce that budget amount and then move that into a salary line.
And that's, and that's my point, because, because otherwise, that contract amount would still stay at its original amount that we budgeted, and then you would show over in your, in your wage line item. And I don't wanna see that if one, you know, I think we need to stay consistent with, with the budget line item, so.
Yeah, it would be a net effect.
Right.
In the bottom line, so I don't think that would be a problem to have Lori do that.
One thing I forgot to add to is we did incorporate trying to have a lot of the kids who are at the juvenile center or non-secure in their CLIPS independent living program to be a part of and be able to access this group as well. So being able to come out, so, so the, excuse me, so the kids in the non-secure independent living program at West Central could participate in this group as well and access these services too.
I was going to ask that question, I probably just was making the assumption that it would, so I'm glad.
I just knew, like, I could sense it.
Because that, that whole, that's all new to us too at the, in the non-secure part of the regional facility. And so those, I think those kids accessing these resources would be a real good thing.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
I gotta see exactly what they're asking for here, so I can.
You know, I think I did not put a motion on this one, which is unusual, I always have that on there, so.
Well, I just wanna say thanks for submitting for the grant. I know that this would be a bigger ask, because obviously there's a need if there wasn't the 70,000 per year attached to it. So great job writing that grant. And clearly it was a worthwhile time because DHS saw the need. And these numbers aren't lost on me, these are, these are heartbreaking numbers. And, you know, I think we need to help support. One, I, my only question is, why, because the need is so high, why was the, the usage at Village low?
Yeah, we have kind of looked at that as well, and in fact, they had sent me some information yesterday. Actually, our referrals were, weren't really reduced. But the engagement with the families, they're struggling with engaging the families. And these folks can speak more to it, but I think we're seeing more and more families that are just significantly ill, whether it be mental health or chemical use. And engaging them has been very difficult. So we're making the referrals, but they're not sticking in with those services. In addition, I know, Amy, you've spoken about the fact that some of these services have become more billable. So they're able to bill health insurance or managed care plans, so that's a good thing. There's less reliance on the contract for that, so it's another factor.
And they've applied for a lot of grants that they're able to serve under their grants that they've applied versus using the county contract. But we have a lot of families who have a lot of chemical health issues where we're just trying to get them to come to visits, let alone working in a service or working with services. We're just struggling to have, engaging even just us to visit their kids or two. So the, the drug epidemic has really played a factor.
That's after placement, I know the front end with my staff, we kind of have a saying that says, services don't equal safety. We're always focused on the safety of kids versus, oh, we can just get a service into place. So if we don't, we don't find that it's appropriate because of how significant some of the chemical use concerns are, then we're gonna be looking at a plan specific to safety.
Which I can appreciate, I think that's good.
This may be redundant, but I'm going to move that we accept the grant and Clay County being the fiscal host for the 70,000 for the year 2020 and 2021. And that of those funds, $46,000 be dedicated to a full-time social work position. And that the remainder of that, of that amount would come from a transfer of funds from the contract with Village Family Service.
I think we have a motion on, and we have a second, any further discussion?
Could, could we add that as we post this position, if we have internal interest that we could backfill?
My motion would include that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we, before you go, we have a very good PIC meeting last Thursday with these people here and asked them at some time to present what they, what they all do, because I thought it was so interesting. And I don't know, Quinn or Michelle, have you got any, or Amy, have you got any? What do you do, I mean, that works out? Do you have anything to tell us that, what is your job, Amy, you're?
Sure, I love to talk about what I do.
Very good.
So we're the front end, so we're the ones that answer the phones, answer the emails when people in the community call us. They're speaking to one of my two intake workers, so they're on the phones all day long, every day, unfortunately. Kind of talking to those mandated involuntary reporters about what are they seeing with the kids that they're worried about. So once we get those reports, we're taking the information in the reports, we're comparing that to the DHS, it's called Child Protection Screening Guidelines. It identifies what actually abuse and neglect is. You know, we say abuse and neglect and everybody kind of just has an idea of what it is, but there's many different facets of abuse and neglect. Medical neglect, inadequate supervision, neglect specific to drug use, physical abuse, sexual abuse, all of the different categories of abuse and neglect. So we compare the information to the report, to those guidelines, and we make a decision if we're gonna have a response or not. Does the worry rise to that level of needing an intervention for child protection? And once we, once we hit that, once we say, yes, this has met that threshold for a response, that's when my assessment workers or my investigators kick in. We're statutorily required to either have eyes on the child within 24 hours or 120 hours. So my staff move quick, it's a lot of fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants. You know, we gotta jump in the car with law enforcement, we gotta get out there and we gotta see those kids right away to make sure that their immediate environment is safe for them. A lot of times it is, a lot of times it isn't. On the chances that it is not safe for kids immediately, we usually always have law enforcement with us. At that point in time, we're trying to create safety plans to keep kids in the home where we know that they'll be safe enough. It's not always successful, you know. Oftentimes, that can look like identifying a support network around parents of, who do you have? Where's grandma, where's grandpa, where's aunt, where's uncle? You got any neighbors or family friends that can come over, that can watch your supervision of your child? Oftentimes, we'll put 24/7 supervision plans in place, which means the parent is in such a bad spot that we have no confidence that they can appropriately parent their child. So we'll have someone else come in that we do have confidence in, maybe a grandma or maybe an aunt and uncle. They will either physically move into the home or we'll ask that the child go to the relative's home temporarily. We try to do all of that in partnership with the parent to have, to have to avoid going to court in the first place. And then over time, we try to establish, how do we know that the child will be safe to remain in the parent's care? And we use that same support network to demonstrate that. So, you know, kind of what that can look like is if a grandmother moves in. So, you know, kind of what that can look like is if a grandmother moves in with a mom and a child, and we're concerned about drug use, not just that the parent is using a drug that we're concerned about, we're concerned about the impact of the child. So we're concerned about the child isn't getting bathed, isn't getting fed, isn't getting the attention that it need, that, that the child needs, isn't getting the love and care that a child needs to grow and develop and to securely attach to their parents. So we use the safety network to observe those things that are being done by the parent, or not done by the parent. And that demonstrated over time gives us confidence that the parent can do a good job and keep the child safe. That's kind of a very minimized version of what we do, of that in combination of trying to get the appropriate chemical health services in place, assuming that a parent is willing to work on those things as well. So it's kind of a multifaceted approach, always focused on child safety first, and trying our best to keep the kid in the home if we can. So we know that kids do best when they can be raised by moms and dads. And if not, not moms and dads, then relatives.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a quick snapshot. And if, at the end of that, we're supposed to do that in forty-five days. So at, at the end of the forty-five days, I mean, if we're not able to just wrap up safety enough where we feel confident that it's not going to be an issue moving forward, we have Amy's staff take over from there.
Thank you. Rhonda, we don't have enough time to go over what you did.
I know. These guys do though.
And my unit is a new unit, so there's kind of a mix. I do a number of programs. I have, I supervise a gal who does all of her voluntary placements, so I sit on the preplacement screening team, where we have maybe mental health case managers come and presenting cases that they think maybe these kiddos need some residential treatment, or our own folks on our unit that will come to that meeting. So I manage that, and then I have a case manager who manages those cases when they do meet that criteria. We talked about Mary Cosquinimi's case a little bit, but she's got a, a mix. She does some CADDY services, some children's mental health, which we recently brought back to the county since I came on. She has a very limited number, though, just because of what our workload is. She's been having to do, cover some child protection cases, which she had done before. And then I have the truancy unit, where I have two case managers that are doing truancy assessments and case management, as far as that goes, so. Shortens it.
Amy, you got anything to add there?
I supervise ongoing case managers, so I do HR, firefighter, no. Because I hire a lot of new staff. I manage, the case managers who have monitored the cases once they've been needed to have services, or if there's kids that are placed out of the state that are placed in this county, we monitor those kids for those states, just like they do for us. So once there's been a need for services, or there's court involvement, because the kids are placed, I manage those case managers as they work through those cases, trying to get either the kids home, or to keep the kids in the home, and work on services and monitoring of safety plans and services.
Well, thank you. And I'd say, I was, I was just interested in what you guys were doing. And a lot of times, we don't know all what's going on, you know, we, we get a piece of paper here, okay, now make a decision, we, we need one more person, you know, why? You know, it's just, just give us a little background of what you do, and I appreciate, you know, you coming forward and doing that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll continue on with the hiring. Mr. Melton, looking for a county attorney civil position. We'll just take a minute here, they'll lay.
Okay. Well, good morning, all. Thought I'd come before you and talk to you, you know, after sitting through the other presentations, you know, I, I like to be able to say, you know, when I look at everything, I'm, I'm, number one, very much an optimist. Number two, you know, I know we have a very dynamic community that's growing, continues to grow, which means additional businesses, additional jobs, additional schooling, a lot of good positives to it, you know. With that, though, you know, as we grow, sometimes some of the things that happen, and, and most of the stuff I get involved with, just like Commissioner Moser who said, you know, some of it is kind of heartbreaking. You know, we deal with kind of the negative part, you know, sometimes we're looking towards rehabilitation, and then some of that work, like we talked about with drug court. But when you look at the drug numbers right now, just what, what Rhonda was talking about, our, our numbers for drugs have really exploded. I, I just looked at that, because I was looking at some other numbers, I'll give you a little bit, but just our drug cases from two thousand seventeen, went from one sixty-seven to two thousand eighteen, up to two hundred fifty-eight cases. So an additional almost ninety cases that we were opening dropped down to two fifty-five in two thousand nineteen. But, you know, kind of like when we look at, we keep going up, it might stabilize a little bit, but, you know, with population growth, a lot of those things, you know, continue to move up. So what I'm looking for, and look to, to ask to the board, is to add additional civil person. The civil person is assistant county attorney that works with the child need of protection or services piece, and then also juvenile delinquency. So when we look at our numbers, that we've gone from on juvenile delinquency side, two thousand seventeen, we had a hundred and twenty-two cases that we opened. We went, two thousand eighteen, it jumped a hundred and seventy-fold, a hundred, we went to two ninety-six. And then in two thousand nineteen, dropped down to two forty-five, but you're still looking at it, you know, a hundred percent increase over those years on the juvenile delinquency side. That's a lot of numbers to manage. And, and I will just say, too, on, on, I know you know our numbers, but out of the eleven attorneys, including myself, ten attorneys, we have seven that do criminal, and then three that do civil, that handle the juvenile delinquency, the CHIPS, that side of things. In two thousand seventeen, regarding to CHIPS, we had seventy-one open cases. Two thousand eighteen, it dropped by eight to sixty-three cases, and in two thousand nineteen, we jumped up to a hundred and ten cases. That fifty-plus fold, or forty, you know, depending on those two years, is, is a difficult number to manage. And so when you hear the discussion that Rhonda talked about, I mean, a lot of the issues that I'm continually dealing with are the difficulties that we're having with the child in need of protection or services increase, all the problems that we're seeing, where the out-home number placements are so high, as Rhonda talked about, the, the, the court cases and placements that are happening through the court. All of those things, every, every section that was up here talking to you from the Social Service Department are areas that my three attorneys touch, so they're involved in the preplacement screening team. They're involved with the juvenile delinquency, or, excuse me, the truancy. We do the county attorney mediation program to try to prevent truancy, work with the truancy providers. And then we work ongoing, so all of those social workers that you looked at are all contacting my three attorneys to work with them when they have to do child need of protection or services petitions, petition to court, work through placement, all those types of things, or all things that they're consulting with them. So we're, we're just touching on all those areas, and those increases that are really non-sustainable, everything that Rhonda said, I just absolutely agree with. Those numbers continue to grow, and they, they're really non-sustainable, the numbers that they're currently at. I mean, there, there just has to be some things we have to look at in the future. And those numbers obviously affect the, my attorneys and what we can do and how we handle it. So, so in looking at that, just the, the volume that we've had, I know that those numbers, not being sustainable, we really need to go from three attorneys up to four. Regularly, I would look to budget that, and look to, to have that occur in two thousand twenty-one, but we are getting to really that critical mass area where we're not returning calls, we're missing timelines, just the exact same things that Rhonda was talking about are things that are affecting us. Additionally, then, I have one of my attorneys that will go, I'm attorney leave here in March. And so those numbers that I'm talking about barely being sustainable with three, and they really need four, they'll have to be sustained by two for a period of time of over three months. And so that's barely sustainable, or I would say that's, you know, not even putting fires out at that point. And so I'm looking at asking to add the attorney, additional attorney, that would basically get us to four here in February, at the beginning of March, it would drop back down to, to three, and then it would come back to four when, when she returns sometime in July. And so, and then I wouldn't be looking to budget one, or ask for one at that point, and we'd have that person added. And so, so this is a non-budgeted position, which is something I've never come to the board and asked for, and I would rarely not look to do that, because I know the, the impact of that, or how that, that looks, but I'm not sure how it's to sustain at this point. Just knowing, just like that, you know, when, when Social Services comes and asks for an additional position, and that need is great, but as you add that, it just adds more work to us. And so it's, it's a definite need, it's, it's really almost a must that we're at, and so that's where I'm at, to come to you and ask about it. We did go through the pick committee, discussed all the issues, I think, that we had with it. Obviously, we don't have grant funding for assistant county attorneys, that, that piece doesn't exist. And so I turned to the board and, and would prefer not to ask this way, but I think it's just something that we, that we need at this point.
Well, when I was chair, we, we dealt with some turnover in terms of the cities and whatnot. And so part of those discussions, we were made aware of the caseloads. And, you know, when we made those adjustments, this, I think the message from this board was that we were going to support you however we best could. And, and I appreciate the fact that you, you haven't asked quite yet, you've kind of made do with what you could in the meantime, but, you know, we can't deny the fact that we had to build a new jail because of the numbers, and the juvenile center because of the numbers. And, I mean, they're all relevant, unfortunately. And, and my biggest issue is when we get to the point when service is being reduced or limited, or we can't keep up, or we're not prepared for court cases because of the sheer number of cases, that's where I have a problem. I mean, it's, it's just, we really aren't serving the best, the best way we can. And I, and I, I wish that there were some way to apply for grants to help fund this, but I just, I don't know what the answer is, besides adding a position.
And I would say this, too. I think I've always been, you know, as a manager, making sure that we are getting the best out of our employees. And we have great employees in the office, we have really good attorneys. Obviously, you all know, we lost some long-term employees, have had some, added some new, younger attorneys, and they're coming in and, and doing great things. They're not as experienced, I mean, so you saw how Rhonda's numbers within Social Services are, you know, there's turnover. We do have some young attorneys that are one in two years, and so they're still, they are learning some things. But even with that said, I think that even if you're looking, you want an experienced attorney, you're, we're, we're really at a, a critical mass with just some of those numbers and everything. And so, you know, that, that plays into some of the difficulties with the turnover in Social Services, turnover that we've had, and, and that's, that's out there, and that's manageable. But it, but even with, I think, if we had, maybe if we had experienced attorneys, all experienced, we might not be experiencing the exact same real problems that we're seeing, but at the same time, we just, the numbers are getting there, where we're definitely, we're getting maximum value and work out of the employees that we have, but there is a need.
Hey, I, you know, in my time with you being the county attorney, I haven't seen where you've made requests like this before. I think, I think you've always done a good job with, with your budget. As Commissioner Moser who said, we had quite a change here on the civil side on the issues with Morehead, and that created some issues, and I agreed that we, we would make it right for your department. And along with that, the, the only part that I struggle with, but I, I'm going to live with it, is the fact that, you know, where does the money come from? You know, that we still always have that deal. I, I'm going to support your request. I'm going to support your request, because I also, I've been one on these, that's, on this board that seems to think that, and I've kind of shown it, that year after year, we always end up having revenues over expenditures within our budget somewhere along the line. And this is one area where, where we should be able to take advantage of that. There's always uncertainties when, when we ask each of our department heads to submit an annual budget. And in, in the area of yours, in the area of Social Services, there, there are constant changes. One never knows, you could have one large family that could come in with multiple kids that can just change the dynamics of everything in a, in a budget, just that simply. So I'm, I'm going to support your request, Mr. Melton, and I, I, I just, you know, I think, I think by doing that, again, Steve, I think we need to, you know, if this passes, we need to modify that line item so that it's showing in there. And then we'll, we'll have to deal with, with where the final money comes from later in the year. But in the meantime, I don't, you know, I think we have the money in the bank to pay it, so. I, I'm, I would move the request.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Well, dude, I have to say, at the pick meeting, we described, or went over quite a bit of it, too, you know, so. I support it, too, so whatever. We have to move forward on our, so. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Post?
Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Okay, without going, committee reports. Kevin, you want to start us off today?
Mr. Kent. Okay, last Tuesday, the twenty-first, after our board meeting, we had a diversion executive meeting. And we just, and it was basically kind of a reorganization. We have a new diversion authority chair this year, being Mayor of Fargo. And, you know, we kind of did some things, and a lot of discussions were calendar planning for things going forward, whether it's what we need to do for the contested case, what we need to do for additional information and updates on WIFIA funding and several things. So that was kind of the focus of the, that meeting.
I just want to say quick, I know Kevin served as vice chair of that board last year, and that was a major time commitment, I know, for you, so thanks for doing that.
Yeah, that, you know, until, until this Thursday, I am still technically the vice chair, but I'm looking forward to Mayor Judd going into that role. I think he'll, he'll do a great job. At least, he has to, he has to have the votes, but I'm going to certainly support.
Support him.
Support him in that role. So then, on the twenty-second, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting. A couple of things to highlight there is that the, the year turned out well in terms of revenues over expenditures. And to give you an idea of how, how we've turned that facility around, in two thousand fifteen, for example, we had a negative cash balance of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in the year two thousand fifteen. In the year two thousand sixteen, and I think that's right, when, when we came on board, was, you know, two thousand fifteen, and, and those budgets, I think, had already been created. But in two thousand sixteen, a hundred and, a negative a hundred and thirty-five thousand year, at the end of the year cash. In two thousand seventeen, we turned that around, and we had eight hundred and eighty-four thousand cash to the good. In two thousand eighteen, that number went to nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And in two thousand nineteen, that number went to one million one hundred and eighteen thousand. So, so that facility's been turned around nicely when it comes to its ability to maintain its budget. Two really exciting things that I got from, from staff there, that I've been working hard for, and I just got at our last meeting, was an internal service fund line item of equipment, so that we can start a process similar that we do here in Clay County, so that we can, we know how much we need to budget on an annual basis for replacement of, of those equipment items. In addition, it came up with a capital improvement plan regarding the facility itself in terms of the major components of the infrastructure, and these are big-ticket items, you know, like drag chains and things like that, that are part of the processing unit, that are separate. And by the way, the, the, the internal service. Uh, and by the way, the, the, uh, the internal service number, the equipment number, the total value of all that equipment is $2 million. And so what they determined an average cost to maintain those, uh, on a rotating basis, based on the life of each item, we'd have to budget $200,000 a year for, for those items, in, in that facility's budget. In the capital improvement plan, the total numbers of items that need, will need to be placed over their life, and each of them have different lives, you know, the life cycles, that, that number is 7,330,000, with an annual number of 731,500. So the two of those together is 930,000 dollars. Uh, in the 2020 budget, we have 740,000 budgeted in there, so we're, we're well on our way to getting there so that we don't ever have to have cash calls coming back to counties like we did here, uh, a few years ago. And that might have been Commissioner Mojo, that might have been maybe like in your first year here when we had the cash call, I can't remember, somewhere in that area, but, but, so it's, it's, it's well on its way to, to doing well, and, um, I got, uh, I got nominated as chair for this year, and also, uh, will be on the budget committee for that group again, so we'll try to make sure that we can maintain, uh, what we've, what we've done to change that around. Uh, then, then, uh, the, um, that, the next day, we had two meetings, we had our solid waste meeting in the morning, and, and, um, we, um, we had a presentation on the holiday lights and the plastic bag challenge that, that our staff does with the local schools, they do a plastic bag challenge for collecting plastic bags. Uh, we got a report on the, uh, fall landfill groundwater report from Winkin Associates, and that, that determines, or we go and, and they determine what's, if, if there's any contamination to the, uh, groundwater supply that's underneath, and, and the report is, is that there's, you know, it's not perfect, but there's nothing that's gonna require action, uh, so that's a good thing. And we got a little bit of an update on the land, the cell expansion, uh, that's going on this year out there from Matt Evans. Okay, then that afternoon, we had a, um, MCC GPA, that's the Minnesota Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting regarding, that's, uh, involved with the diversion project. Uh, we, several items of action that we did was, um, uh, acknowledging some, we have some landowners that are willing participants to, to sell, and there's been some offers and counter offers going on, and, and so we're in that process and dealing with those landowners right now. Yesterday, um, we had the meetings of the, um, correctional facility and juvenile construction meetings, I, I could only stay for the, uh, jail portion of that, and, uh, obviously that's winding down. And last Friday, uh, we did receive the certificate of occupancy for that facility, so, so we're ready to roll here, and I, you know, I think, um, I think the plan is on February 7th is when, when they're gonna start serving meals from the kitchen, so that's a great deal. And unfortunately, I had a, a quick change in my schedule yesterday, so I didn't get to, to go on the tour that I had asked to have, uh, so, uh, Commissioner Gross was able to go in my place, and I, I, there's a, a tour scheduled for today, and I'm hoping to go there, and I believe you're also gonna go there at 2:00 today, so, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. And I think then we have a meeting scheduled of, of the jail construction piece, February 10th, and I, or I think it's the 9th, or whatever that Monday is, and that will probably be the last of our meetings for the construction of the jail and law enforcement project.
Wow.
So that's a number of years that have been involved with that, and, and that will come to an end on the 10th, uh, with probably will be my final report regarding those projects. The, um, juvenile, uh, project, Steve and I'll have to let you give an update on that one. That one, I would assume that we'll be going forward on those, with those meetings, probably till maybe sometime in early April, and then that, that one will also wind down and be done, so. Uh, and, oh, and then I did, uh, I did, um, attend the Buffalo Red River Watershed, um, meeting last night, um, and the only, the only really discussions that had, had occurred regard, of interest to Clay County were, um, some permit, uh, requests that were approved, and, and Commissioner Mojo, or Commissioner Gross, you recall that, um, we had had discussions in highway tracking and regarding the County Road 18 project, and that there, that there's been some water backing up there, and, and we had requested, uh, that Buffalo Red participate in a 50-50 cost share on that, and that number was upwards of 60,000 to 80,000 total, and they, they did vote last night to approve, um, funding 50% of that, so. Um, there was nothing else there, um, Jason Bence, I believe, is, he's the, with Houston, was there, and I, he got up towards the end, and, and apparently at their annual meeting, uh, they, um, they had a, or they renewed Houston's contract for two years.
Yep.
Uh, but for some reason, uh, last night, there, when he got up there and talked, there was some discussion or some, I, I got the impression that there might be a consideration in, in changing the administration piece of that. Um, I just, I listened intently, and I, um, I would hope that before, uh, that board would make a decision to do s- something like that, that's significant, that our county boards, uh, have an opportunity to have a say in that. I didn't, I didn't speak to it last night, but I, it was just something that I was maybe reading between the lines, so to speak, uh, I guess I've been to enough meetings where sometimes you can kinda, uh, see the potential of something coming, and I, I, I just think our board, um, before they make such a significant change like that, that, uh, we as, as, you know, Clay County, as we've said before, is a major contributor to that, that, that we should have an input into that decision before it happens. And, uh, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and, and I know, Commissioner Mojo, you normally attend those meetings, and if that, if, if that were to happen before, I would hope that you would concur, uh, with.
Absolutely.
With what I'm saying there, that, that we need to have that dialogue before they just do that on their own, so. That concludes my report.
You forgot Friday.
Oh, I am sorry, yes, I forgot Friday, yeah. Uh, Friday, we had our, uh, thank you, our intergovernmental retreat, and it was all about workforce and, and, um, understanding from millennials to, uh, our seniors, to my lefters, to traditionalists like Mr. Gross, and, and the one thing that I, and we had a little contest that was done, and my, my group won the contest in regards to the, to music trivia, and we didn't have any millennials in our group. But what we had is, we had, we had the older people who already experienced with millennials because they're our kids and our grandkids, they're millennials and Generation X, and so, you know, I'm bragging a little bit here now. But it was a, it was a, uh, the presentation, uh, the morning presentation by that young lady, and I, I, I don't have her name written down, but she was, she did a great job, she was really, really a good speaker, and, you know, and, and she started off, and the first thing she wanted to let us know was that she was a millennial, and, and, but she, it was great, and, and, you know, I, I think, I'm gonna steal a little bit of Commissioner Haney's thunder, the lunch was good too.
Jim, you got something there?
Yeah, I got a couple, thank you.
Her name was Lindsey Swigum.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
From Bridgeworks.
Yeah, very, very good.
Bridgeworks in Wayzata, I also attended that, um, and, um, and multi-generational communication and collaborative skills were discussed, and agism was also discussed by Charlie Patterson, one of the city council members, a couple of excellent presentations, of course, then followed by a great lunch with Casey Jones Catering, right here in Clay County.
Saban.
In Saban, Minnesota, and then, uh, before that, let's see, or I'm sorry, after that, yesterday, Commissioner Gross and I attended the, um, building committee meeting about potential, looking at options for us going down the road, uh, anywhere from, like, 10 to 20 years in the future, future county needs, and what we're gonna be doing, if anything at all, and addressing to the, the space needs on all the campus, in all the buildings and all the properties, and it's, uh, looking at, that, uh, we're gonna be, they're preparing, the architect and the builders are preparing options for us to look at in preparation, in preparation for a potential board presentation in February or March. So, that's where we're at there, that's my report.
If I can go back to my report for a minute, um, at the solid waste committee meeting too, we did present Dr. Kenneth Foster from Concordia College with the recycler of the year award, I should not have, uh, uh, forgot to mention that, but, uh, he came to the meeting and he was just thrilled, and, and him and his, uh, his students, they, they really do, uh, work hard on, on that, the whole recycling and environmental stuff that goes on and that they try to do, so that, that was good. And, and I, I do wanna say that we did, we did have another meeting afterwards, um, that deals with the recycling piece of the solid waste budget, and in the past, we've budgeted so much in solid waste for recycling, and then each community has the ability to submit based on, uh, qualifying criteria, but what's happened in the past, and this is something that we've never known, uh, was regardless of what they sub, how much they submit, we would just pay it, even if it were to exceed what we budgeted, and, you know, we basically have said, no, we can't, we can't do that anymore, if we're gonna have a budgeted amount in recycling. So I think what's gonna become before this board, there was, there was some discussions about changing or creating a formula, and I think what, you know, what, uh, what we've kind of agreed to in this group is that we don't wanna see any, any community, uh, that has received recycling dollars to go backwards from, from this point on, so, uh, so what we're gonna, I think what's gonna come forward is, is there, we're gonna, proposal is to send a letter to these communities for 2020, saying that they're, they're gonna have this dollar amount available to them, provided that they do the qualifying, um, submit the qualifying expenditures to receive that money up to a maximum amount, which they've never had before, and, and we just need to do that, just to, to, to be safe that, 'cause if they go over it, where do we get that money, you know? Um, so that's, that's gonna probably be coming before this board here in the next, next meeting or two, so. Uh, thank you, I.
Jenny, you got two weeks of reports for us, along with how families deals with flu and stuff?
Yeah, well, when, we have the stomach flu and RSV and all that fun stuff, so wash your hands. Okay, so, uh, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the three-day Red River Basin Commission Conference in Fargo, uh, their, um, title was Nourished by Nature, Getting Back to Our Roots, and man, that is quite a gathering of folks from North Dakota and Minnesota and Manitoba and, um, South Dakota, all over the place, so, uh, lots of really good presentations on different projects that everyone is doing to, uh, deal with water, and right this season, we've got lots of it, as we all know. Uh, I also attended the MetroCog meeting, a policy board meeting last week, where we attended the, or approved their urban roads program solicitation and the grant program solicitation, uh, talked a lot about, um, the projects recommended going forward, we, there are three projects, uh, for North Dakota DOT from Fargo and one from West Fargo, so some convers, long conversation on those priorities and, uh, funding hopefully that will come that way, and, uh, United Way was also present at that. I also attended the Planning Commission Subcommittee of the Ordinances, where we're looking at some ordinances to just, um, address where there may be some conflict, um, with other ordinances. Um, that's something that, if we really dove into it, it would take years to do, so we're just trying to scratch the surface with some stuff, mainly, um, uh, issues that they've had at the Board of Adjustment. We've also continuing discussion on signs, uh, and we'll have, um, some recommendations going forward. I do have the ordinances, uh, with some highlighted changes, recommended changes, that obviously will go to the Planning Commission and then this board for further discussion, so, no changes as of yet. I had a, uh, some AMC extension issues that we're in the process of, uh, reviewing the 4H award nominations that we will present at the Legislative Conference, if you recall, during that one, uh, meeting, they highlight some, uh, overzealous young people within our state, so, in the process of reviewing those applications, and also I had Steve forward to you, uh, there are some, as, for extension, they're highlighting some rural mental health initiatives, and there will be some rural res, community resilience roundtable discussions happening, one of which, one date is a webinar, I really encourage you, if you can take part in any, any capacity, I think it's really great to hear what extension has available and how we can network that out. I sat with, at a conference yesterday, the, uh, one of the leaders from Minnesota Farmers Union, and he was interested in those discussions, and then they can, uh, forward the information as well, so, uh, good things that AMC is doing, uh, and extension. Last week, I had the Lakes and Prairies, uh, board meeting, we approved some grants. Typically, when staff goes to their national conference, it's, uh, in Washington DC, they take a board member or two, I've attended in the past, it's great for, uh, talking with congressional delegates. They will unfortunately be on break during that time, so the board made a decision to not send staff at that time, you know, it's hard if you can't network, so they won't be going. Um, and, uh, great updates from Head Start in what they're, um, continuing the challenge to get those kiddos connected to services. Lakes and Prairies will be having a couple, uh, fundraisers going forward next, next week for Giving Hearts Day, but in May, they are partnering with, um, families that are receiving services from community action and local artists and crafters to create some, some items for a, uh, auction, and so they will be doing that to, um, uh, raise funds. I also attended the intergovernmental retreat, our law, law enforcement center building is great for that, and is really, uh, serves that well, uh, good updates, I think, from our legislative forum. The item particularly of note for me was the, uh, conversation on workforce issues all the way from the home builders to HR at Sanford and Shields, and we all know that there are some complex issues to the worker shortage. I spoke with one of the commissioners from Otter Tail County yesterday, and he said in the city of Purim, which obviously is a smaller city, there are 5,000 open full-time positions, and that's just in a smaller city, and so they're not, they're not unique, that, that is the issue in all of the smaller cities, but even more so in the Fargo-Morehead communities.
There is strong manufacturing in a small city.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, so. And, yesterday, Lakeland, uh, Mental Health Center, we looked over the 2019 program trends and access indicators, which I forwarded to Rhonda, uh, they were able to find some grant dollars to continue that relationship, Lakeland is really imperative in, in offering services to the, all of the conversation pieces that we had here today. Law Library, we had, um, the election of new officers, uh, that was a special meeting, and then yesterday, I attended the Red River Water Management Board Drainage I attended the Red River Water Management Board Drainage Reduction Conference. Lots of updates, legal updates on what different watersheds, water authorities are dealing with the projects. And over the last two weeks, attending those water conferences, it's just, I want the public to know that we are, there are so many different levels working on the unique drainage issues. Everything from making sure our ditches are working correctly, to different retention projects, to culvert sizes, to drain tiles, all of it, maybe small scale compared to bigger, obviously, river diversion type issues that we're looking, working with. But I really felt like those were really quite informative. So I believe that concludes my report.
Okay, I had last Tuesday and Thursday, the two PIC meetings, and we pretty well covered that already this morning with the requests. Tuesday also, the Extension had a crop update thing for farmers at Legion, and sat through that, most of that. And it's just amazing, as you listen to the presentations given to farmers, what they have to go to, you know, just the weed control, you know. It's not just a matter of going out there in January the fifteenth, or June 15th, you go out and spray your weeds. I mean, they pollinate at a different time, and you really have to be knowledgeable in all that stuff. And it was a good presentation on when certain weeds pollinate, and when you spray those and stuff like that. So it's a good thing put on by the Extension. That was a very good, very good course there for the farmers. Criminal justice, I was hoping, well, didn't get a chance when Chanel was here, but a criminal justice meeting also on, on Tuesday. And it's just interesting how Chanel is trying to coordinate probation and the courts and clerk of courts and all those people. What one does really affects everybody else, you know, and it's just, it's, it's just an interesting group that she's giving together, that she's having monthly or every other month meetings. And I think it's a very helpful meeting, 'cause it's just amazing, you think, didn't these guys talk to each other before, you know, except, and it's really, it's been a good, beneficial meeting that she's doing. Intergovernmental retreat, I was there, too, on Friday, and yes, I found out I'm a traditionalist. Very few were there.
Not a shock to us.
Minority, you're a minority.
Yes. I don't even know, there's probably one other one there.
I think I only saw one arm, one hand go.
Ooh, not good news. The other guy probably couldn't raise his hand, who knows?[868.12][868.12][laughter]
Frank.
I know, we're getting old, mate.
We love you, though.[875.06][875.06][laughter]
But the retreat, you know, it's interesting, talking, Ditchiki was there. You know, when you look at how some of these communities are doing, you know, Thieve River Falls, 8,000 people, 4,000, there's 4,000 people working at Ditchiki. And I drove by there last night, I was up there for a basketball game, and good grief, that place is big. You know, and, I mean, but you look at a company, 4,000 people are employed there. That's, that's amazing information that you find out from bringing these groups together, listening to their talking and stuff like that. And yesterday, yes, we did have master planning on, on construction, and, oh gosh, that scares me. I mean, we look, we're looking at, what are we gonna build, you know? Should we just take a piece of the Family Service Center? I mean, they're busting at the seams over there. They need, they need more space. So you, do you take one out or whatever? Do you, do you move everybody else out that, that's there, that's not county-connected? Well, that's a loss of revenue then, you know, and so you, you can't, you don't really wanna do that, you know. So do you move just one item out of there, or do you bite the bullet and build one big family administration building, you know? And it's just, a lot of decisions have to be made there, and they're coming up with some more plans. And, you know, and if we are gonna build, you know, it's, where are you gonna get the property from? Where are you gonna build that? Very good discussion, and like Jim said, they'll be coming to us with some more, more ideas here in the future.
Where are you gonna get the property and the money from?
Those are both good questions, aren't they?
Yeah. You know, that money part, you know, it's just, it's almost should be first, you know. You say, well, you gotta know how much money, but, but where are you gonna get the money from? You know, I mean, we just got done with, I mean, talking about $60 million here, you know, 32 million for the jail, then 15 million for the LEC, 10 million for the juvenile center. You know, that's, that's a lot of money we gotta pay off here.
Six million for the transfer station.
Yeah, keep adding it in there, you know, it's just, you know, yes, this county's growing, and we're doing, and we're doing good. I mean, when you're looking at 60, 60 million dollars that we're responsible for, and we're paying for it. So it's, we're doing fine. I mean, and when you look at the different counties, how we rate the different counties, we're, we're way down there as far as per capita, you know, so we're doing a good job. But more needs to be done, and hopefully we can get something done with that, with that building thing. But, and I did go through the tour of the jail yesterday with the new part, and, oh dang it, that was, I mean, I shouldn't say nice, but it's very efficient. You know, it planned out well, so whatever your committee, you, you guys were on there, it's just a well-planned-out thing. Julie and Justin did a great job, and I think we're gonna have a good place over there to maintain prisoners. And going through that kitchen, oh dang it, that's, we didn't start holding parties there, probably, some, I don't know, but they got the facility there, you know, I mean. I shouldn't say it's elaborate, but it's set up well. It's very good. You know, a good laundry room and stuff that they put in there. It's just a good tour. I would thank Julie for that tour. Okay, that's, thank you.
I just have one more thing. Yesterday, one quote, and I think this plays off of what you just said, that, does the financial capacity of the community justify the need for the project? And that's on water issues or building issues. And that's, I think, the, the thing that we struggle with along this table, is how do we balance that to not overburden? The only, I know I missed and had seen that the governor's budget and bonding issues that came out, and I commend our projects that got in there. I know there was a significant amount of groundwork that went into that. But I did notice, on one of the City of Moorheads items, it said that the Clay County Commissioner had signed a resolution of support, and I don't ever recall the county, this county board signing.
On which item?
On the aquatic, aquatic center.
I don't ever think we've taken action on that, and that was in, in on the request. And so I just, I wanna clarify, I didn't miss that.
You know, the items that I know that, that obviously we've signed on, of course, and we've, we've passed resolutions and support on, of course, was the transfer station, because we're gonna own it.
Right.
And then, and then I do recall submitting for our board to support efforts on the 11th Street.
Underpass.
Underpass. I don't recall anything in return, in regards to the county taking a position.
Right.
I, I, as a matter of fact, I wasn't even aware of the.
Yeah, and I was, so when I went on there to look at it, I just was a little surprised, because I don't recall us, I don't even, I don't know any information on it anyways.
I mean, if an individual commissioner did it, that's, as long as they state that way.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, you know, I read in the paper last night about Moorhead and a potential half-cent sales tax.
My understanding, it was on their agenda last night for council.
Okay.
Maybe if I could on that. I know that I was at a, a meeting, I attended the same meeting with, it was the MCC JPA meeting, and afterwards, Mayor Judd and the city manager did pull me aside and tell me that they were gonna, and they, they're not sure they're gonna even use that, but because of the timing that's needed for adopting that resolution and for the potential for it to even be on a ballot, they had to, they had to make that motion last. I, I don't know, you know, I, I think there's still a lot that, they still have to determine yet, but I think that was the intention there. Just, just in case that they do, they needed this from a timeline standpoint.
I know Commissioner Moser, our next joint, joint committee with the, with the city and the school district, that they've asked to have that on the agenda, so we should have additional information.
Okay. If you could just forward that to the other commissioners not on that, if you ever receive a document on it.
Sure.
Jim? I have one more thing that I noted in that article about the city council passing that action last night. It stated in the article, in the forum, that our sales tax increase that we passed to fund the jail and the law enforcement center would be paid up in 2027.
That's incorrect.
I know that, that's why I'm pointing that out, yeah.
Okay.
Because 2037 is what the actual date is. And so, wanted to make sure that that was noted, and people don't think that we've only got six more years to pay for the jail and the, and the LEC.
Good catch.
Did you do any this week's?
Yeah, last week was a, was a pretty busy week. On Tuesday after board, as been mentioned, we had two PIC meetings this past week, of issues that were addressed this morning. Wednesday, I participated in the interviews for the HR benefits position. I believe that, I haven't talked to Darren this week, but I believe that, that a position has been offered, and we're waiting to hear on that. On the, that, later that day, I met with construction engineers and a representative from the local business, department here in Clay County on the potential work with construction engineers. On the 23rd, that afternoon, or that morning, I participated in the SWAC that Commissioner Campbell has addressed. Later that morning, I met with Shelley Jeffers and Brian Milton. Currently, we have three contracts for, that we pay for, for our public defender's office through the social service department. Interestingly enough, currently, the contracts aren't between anybody from the county, they're, they're from the judges, from District Seven, Shelley Jeffers and, and the attorneys. And so the state's looking at becoming more consistent with their contracts, and are looking to, to move those contracts, to have a county representative sign them. And so right now, we're in the middle of a contract, but, but the state is, is requesting that move. Brian is reviewing the contracts, and we may be having a, that, that issue brought up before this board here later this year. We attended the Minnesota County, City and County JPA that Commissioner Campbell has addressed. I would just note that in our lands committee that we have, I believe, next week, one of the, one of the items that are on there is how we would like to deal as a county with, with the biotic and geomorphic easements that they're looking at. And so that's one of the, the things that I've asked Matt to add to the agenda item, to, to bring to this, to our committee and then potentially this board, and how they'd like to deal with those properties. On Friday morning, I came aware of a pre-meeting with Clyde McCarthy and Construction Engineers for, prior to our master planning meeting that we had on, on Monday. And so I participated in that. Then after, later that morning, I attended the governmental retreat. Again, I thought, echo all the positive sentiments that were, that were said this morning. Thank you for the City of Moorhead, they were, they were in charge of setting up this year's, this year's retreat. Next year, we will be, Commissioner Haney will be chairing that, that committee as we move forward. Yesterday morning, just touching prior to our, our master planning, we did have a, a pre-meeting with Joe. Joe was, we've been having a series of issues with our boiler down here in the courthouse. And so we've, Joe's been keeping an eye on that for a number of years, and it's kind of hit the critical point where I don't think we have a choice anymore but to act. And so Joe's gonna be, Joe's going to be bringing forward some, some different information over the next few board meetings, looking for approvals for some, some contracts and potential bids. Again, the master planning, Commissioner Gross has, and Haney have addressed that. Yesterday afternoon, we have, we attended the joint, excuse me, the Corrections Owners Meeting. Again, we have, we did receive our certificate of occupancy, and I've been working with MCIT to ensure that we have adequate coverage for that facility. Again, there's tours today at two, from 2:00 to 4:30, and also Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:30. In our tour yesterday, we did have other representatives from the county, and it didn't take as long as, as they had projected. So if anybody's thinking of that, it's not quite, quite as long. And also, I participated in the owners' meeting for the juvenile facility. October 29th, the Department of Corrections, Department of Corrections, Corrections Division is coming in looking at the non-secure portion. And so we'll, we'll be looking at having the potential of additional bed space.
You said October.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Tomorrow, January 20, 29th, it's, I wrote down October, so. January 29th, the Department of Corrections will be here to, to look at the additional bed space for a non-secure program. They've been piloting some, some youth through our, through our independent living skills program, and this will be the, the additional beds that will be available there. And so I know that, in talking with James O'Donnell, that they already have, they have youth that are waiting to get into that program. And so I remember those beds will certainly be utilized fairly quickly. And again, they're still targeting, I think, a March 16th opening, and so we're, we're getting close there. Just a couple, touch on, a couple things. Drug court graduation, that was mentioned earlier, again, is tomorrow, 1:15 in courtroom number one. And then we, they had to reschedule the open house for referee Soli due to the weather. And so they're looking at January 30th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. down in the jury room. And that concludes my report.
Just a little bit more on Joe, the meeting we had with Joe at 9:00, 9:30 yesterday morning. And there are boiler problems, in fact, that we got, they're down again this week. They're repairing it. It's getting to be almost weekly that there's finding leaks on that thing. And Joe will be coming to us, first of all, he's gotta get an engineer in here, what, what can we design, you know, to redesign everything. It was interesting to hear, we got 122 heating units in this building. So, and they normally replace about six to 10 of them a year, because they've been in there for quite a while. So that's quite a project. Jail, I think also, I think the jail is looking at taking, Department thinking on prisoners there. You were talking about the juvenile center.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think the jail's also looking at bringing on the Department of Correctional prisoners in here, too, I think.
Well, I think we, I think we authorized a contract for that.
Yeah, I think we authorized Julie to look into, to a contract. I don't know that she has one yet, but I know that the Department of Corrections is looking to, to local county facilities to help ease their issues.
Okay. Who else? Colleen, who else? Oh, Lynn Clementon, how we got that meeting, February 24th. I think you're going to that, because we got the Buffalo Watershed meeting that same day, so.
Is that the, is that the annual meeting?
Annual meeting.
The annual meeting.
Which all members?
All of us, and it's on our list.
But I see the Buffalo Watershed also has a policy committee meeting that they, that you and I are on, I think, so.
I guess I didn't have that one. What time?
Oh, well, that's during the same time, 11 o'clock.
I'll message her and let her know that I won't be available.
At the Buffalo, you're going to, you're gonna be at the.
Yeah, I chair that Lakeland.
Right, that's what I figured, so. I thought I'd probably tend to Buffalo one minute. Okay, very good. That's it, we're adjourned.